Welcome, everybody, to the May 10th special meeting. Let the record read that councilpersons Peggy, Greg, Larry, and Charlie, and Mayor Pat are present. At this time, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The reason that we called this special meeting is the only agenda item, which is the Fishing Creek dredge maintenance easement and authorization to the Army Corps of Engineers. And Holly, I'll let you take the ball.
Thank you. So, the Army Corps of Engineers requires authorization from the town by way of an easement to access our dredge material placement site. That location is just behind Kellam's Field. It's approximately 7.88 acres. And the Army Corps of Engineers has put forward a plan and a draft easement, which our town attorney has reviewed for the town's approval.
Hey, if you have anything else to add, if the council has any questions, I'll begin with Charlie.
I don't really have any questions. I wonder if one day we can fill most of Lake Moffett in and turn it into a walking path, but that's probably not a topic for today, so I don't have anything else.
Thank you, sir.
A couple of questions. Do we know if there's any plan to do some testing of the dredged material for possible contaminants like PFAS?
Jay, do you want to cover that?
Yes, so my understanding is they are going to do spot testing as it comes back. They're still going to locate to the dredge spoil site, but record that testing along the way.
Good. I think that's very appropriate. And then, second question I had, my understanding is they're going to run a pipeline from basically down here in Marina over to the dredge site. Is that correct? Okay.
Correct. We actually kind of preliminarily walked that through, weighing the town engineer and myself today.
Because my question was, how were they going to get underneath or over the Fishing Creek Trail? But if it's a pipeline, I'm sure they can lay it underneath there, so.
And they're going to come out with a more formalized plan, but we went over some very specifics today. A part of it will be submerged to keep the navigable channel open. Part of it will be floating along the pier. It's going to be very similar to the last time they did the big dredge.
And do we have any idea the duration, how long it's going to take?
We didn't get into that.
Okay.
But I can follow up on that.
Okay, if you can. Thank you. So I have.
Thank you. Mr. Morris.
Sir, thank you. Good evening, everybody. I do have a couple of questions. I wanted to confirm that the Army Corps was paying for the jetty wall repairs as well, not just the dredging?
That's correct.
I was a little confused by the use of grantee and grantor in the way that it was filled This easement deed made this day, I know we need to fill the dates in there, but between, and there's blank there, who's going to be called the grantor? Is Chesapeake Beach the grantor?
Chesapeake Beach, well, the state of Maryland would be the grantee. Chesapeake Beach would be the grantor.
Okay, because it reads, let's see, it's hereafter called the grantor, so the grantor will be, so the between, so between the two words, between and hereafter, here and after, that's going to be Chesapeake Beach.
There's no doubt about it.
Called the grantor. Okay.
Definitely needs to be cleaned up as far as just the formatting.
Sure, no problem.
Yes, Chesapeake Beach will be the grantor, and the state of Maryland, Nelson's will be the grantee.
Well, as it goes on, between Chesapeake Beach, here and after called grantor, and Chesapeake Beach political subdivision, Coward County, blah, 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 here and after called the grantee. The grantee, isn't that the Army Corps?
It's state of Maryland.
Okay, so where Chesapeake Beach is in here, that needs to be state of Maryland.
Well, Chesapeake Beach is the one that's granting the deed of easement for the use by the Army Corps, and that's the state of Maryland. They're going to be the grantee. Grantor is granting it to the grantee.
The grantee is the state of Maryland.
Correct. And including with the grantee will also be the Army Corps. As part of that, like I said, part of that needs to be filled in as far as.
Yes, this was just a template that was provided, but definitely we'll clean up the language.
That's cool. So where Chesapeake Beach is emboldened, that'll be the state of Maryland or whatever there, and then we'll be up here. Arbor Project, that's just the dredge project. Other, that's the work that they're proposing, right? I'm not talking any Arbor Vista weird stuff.
Right, no.
Looks like it's not in perpetuity, it's for a period of two years. It gave them enough time to do the work. Have we typically granted easements before?
Yes.
Resume two years is what we've done in the past.
That's correct.
I think my only other, I have a request, a copy of executed agreements when they're through. I saw that there were two agreements in here. Does somebody differentiate, just in a nutshell, the difference between the pipeline easement deed and then the material easement deed?
So, the material easement, this is basically for placing the material at the DMP site, and then the pipeline that's actually carrying the material over to the DMP site.
Yes, gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Peggy?
Yeah. I have a quick comment for cleanup. On map one, sixth line down, I think you mean Anchorage? Or is that a word? Acorage? Is that another word? Or acreage? Sixth line from the top under existing projects, right above 120 feet. This is the Army Corps of Engineers' language, so I will clarify exactly if that was what was intended there. I will find out. Great, thank you. And then, the second map, that is the pipeline, because it just says proposed, so that's the pipeline.
Yes, correct.
Great. And will the people in Windward Key have to move their boats during this process at all?
I don't believe so, Jay.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, great. Just seems like there's going to be a lot of coming and going. All right, that was all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Let the record read that Councilwoman Bodine is present, and I assume you read this in advance. Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, very good, thank you. At this point in time, I need a motion from the town council to authorize the mayor to execute the easement, allowing the Army Corps of Engineers to utilize the DMP site for dredge material placement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Brief discussion?
Sure, I'm sorry.
This is a procedural question. So, is this, the reason we're doing this in a special meeting as opposed to adding it to work session?
Correct. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Thank you, council. We'll resume at 6 o'clock for the work session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. We'll resume at 6.
Used to be on the video, my hand comes off now.
Yeah, okay. We can turn our mics off.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and now we'll explain why we're doing that, and I guess you want to do that. One second, everybody. We need you to take your seat.
Oh, I just want to make sure there was clarification on the record, because the council just voted for the dredge material easement deed, but in essence, tonight with the special session, we are in essence going over two easements. The second one was for the dredged disposal pipeline easement deed. So I know council discussed that during it, but just for the procedural purposes and for the record, probably be a good idea if the council voted on that second easement deed also.
So then, I think what I'll do is I'll seek a motion for that, and then if the council wants to discuss it further, we'll do it after we get a second. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, okay. So you help me with the motion, and so I need a further motion from the town council to authorize the mayor to execute the easement?
The dredged disposal pipeline easement deed.
Dredged disposal pipeline easement deed.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, got that business done. No sense waiting till next week.
Thank you, John.
No, good, thank you.
Was it moving? Could you feel the building move? When that's strong, I guess. Yeah. That's pretty cool. There is something cool about being in a storm when you know you're safe, like having a bird's eye view, you know what I mean? You're North Wildwood, right?
Yeah.
Just want to see how close it is to my sisters. Oh, yeah, okay. Yes, you know what's wild? So where was your place?
Third in the ocean, 30,000, a few. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. So you're, it's right over 30, right there. Aloha, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, did you do that tour?
So when we're looking out, we get the top view there, so when we're looking out, there's actually exposure to, it's right on top of these drive, it's not that far back. It's right on top of it. But the view, they go saying.
That's ridiculous. That's a great.
Yeah, you have that view, then you have the inlet, this is the inlet right there, you know, so you have all of that.
Biggest rooms probably like double.
And there's actually right here, a point of rocks that you know jetty out, where back in the old days.
Exactly.
I used to go out and sit on those rocks.
And I would say most of the rooms were maybe.
I got there and sit.
Little chapels, and they have chapels.
My sister's house is right there.
She's right there.
I mean, think about that, how close you are. And when we do our bike ride, Philadelphia to Stone Harbor, we come right in here, right through the entrance and over this bridge. I mean, and I've never ridden or gone down, I've never been down here.
Actually, they have a promenade that you can walk right up here. This is where all the bars are, right there, and restaurants. It's a really nice promenade. The sea wall is where I call my home point. It has an official name there. You can go from there.
Oh, there you are. What kind of beer you drinking at that? So you go out here, or you're saying it's just right on this point here?
Right there, at that point. And there's a promenade right here that goes right here.
Oh, I see.
Up into the center of town. It's a really, I mean, it's just.
You know, I'm going to have to get over there. I might be up there Memorial Day at my sister's. I might try to get over and walk around North Wildwood. Never done it before.
Yeah, well, you know, check the, where I stay, obviously, you're going to want to see that, and then just where the, you know, Kenans and the.
This is all it, right?
Yeah. Anglesey Pub, that little area, that's Anglesey. And that's.
Actually could be.
You know, we actually went to this little pub called.
Right now.
Scheduled to.
Where is it?
First in New Jersey, maybe. I've been down there like a dozen times. Love it down there. Love it.
One of the big ones?
Okay. Oh, Anglesey, it's all one word.
Yeah, Anglesey, yeah.
Right there.
The good news is quarantine on both. No, no. It's a small group.
You know, there's a lot of people, I know in Stone Harbor, there's a lot of people who want to be on the bayside.
Yeah, they never did when I was a kid.
But now, you know, the ocean's nice, but people want to put in, drop in their kayaks or whatever, so they kind of want to be on the.
Protect it a little more.
And there's the sunset. Which, to me, it just sounds like it's hot in the sun.
Yeah.
I know, I know. I'm glad you had a good time.
Oh, yeah. BBI.
Well, that's great.
Yeah, we just, you know, there, okay, let's go over there.
That's great. That's fantastic. Witnessing his authorization. Yes, you agree.
Right. Earth, not the field. Hey, Sharon? Hey. Hello, everybody. Let the record read that the entire council, except for Councilman Partick, is present. Once again, we're honored to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item is water reclamation treatment plant bio-solids sludge removal.
So the town recently went out to bid for bio-solid sludge removal. On average, the water reclamation treatment plant disposes of approximately 1,700 tons of bio-solid sludge removal each year. We did budget for an increase in this cost. It's a cost that we have secured typically over a two- or three-year period of time. So we have one proposal received from Senegro, O-line Environmental, that we've provided information to town council, along with the scope of work for discussion.
Okay, we've read the material, beginning with Peggy, if we have any comments.
Yeah, I have a few questions. So what happened to the other 29? Just nobody responded?
We did hear from a couple contractors. It's a very limited amount of contractors that do this specific type of work, because it is also processing, it's removal and processing.
Right.
For spreading on land, instead of just going straight to landfill. So there are not a lot of contractors, I think, that specifically serve this area of Maryland.
Great, thanks. And is this the same company we've used previously?
Yes.
And for how long have you used them?
At least five years.
Several years.
Mm-hmm.
I can't remember how many. I could find out for you, but it's at least three or four.
And you've been happy. I mean, not that we're having a lot of choice right now, but, and you've been happy with them.
Oh, yes, they, it's a kind of odd type of partnership, because they leave, actually leave a trailer in our building just for us, because we can't dictate how many times we're going to run in a week and things like that. So that's a cost thing that, you know, a lot of other contractors won't pick up.
Cool. Thank you.
And they've been removing it pretty good. Plus, we like the process.
Yeah.
They take it and they take it up to Curtis Bay, and what they do is they put it through a dryer and heat exchangers, but they don't burn it to ash. They call it pasteurization, and that's where they don't kill it all, they kill the pathogens, but they have a product left over that they can mix in for fertilizers and compost and everything. And then, they sell some of it, and then they can also be able to permits, be able to put it on land. The only thing that we're missing there is they don't cook it to ash, and the chemist up there for O-line says she doesn't think that burning it, even at that temperature, can get rid of PFAS.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
But they do get rid of, you know, they know exactly what they're putting in for fertilizers and stuff.
Right, right.
By doing the pasteurization.
Very good, thank you, thank you. And there is a comment that the price is higher than what we budgeted, is how much?
Well, it's kind of hard to figure this up when we do the budgets.
Oh, yeah.
And all this stuff going on. At that time, the CPI was around 6%, so we figured maybe 8% was by the time we go to negotiation.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's, what, around 8? I mean, it's like 9%, 9% now or something, but they hit us with about 13%. And, I mean, they probably, we didn't, you know, there's no breakdown yet, but they kind of told us that they possibly could maybe add that trailer in, some other little things that are coming up, and it's crazy for the price, but at the 8%, we had figured it was going to be like 10, 1050 over what we were paying, and they came in at 13, so it's 14850. We put in 246,000, and out of that particular line item, we also include the dumpsters at the plant, so we had 242,000, but it came over, I think it was 252, something, so it's like 9,000, yeah, I mean, dollars or more, some change, but I think, talking with my assistant over here, if we finally figured out a way to math it, to figure out to actually get 24 to 25 tons on it, because we didn't have any scales, we were just eyeballing it, and we were coming out higher in the tonnage, but I believe if it's watched, and we limit the times and we try to set the process different, make some adjustments, we may be able to make this budget at the 252 for 1,700.
Ah.
By coming down around about, what did I say, about 16, at 1631, we're at our budget in tonnage. So I'm hoping that we can come around that tonnage, around 1631, if we watch it.
It'll be interesting to see if their increases are for fuel, for burning.
Well, that's probably in this upgrade.
Yeah.
But they're burning diesel.
Yeah.
Diesel is.
It is, it is. All right. All right, thank you, that's all my questions.
Thank you, Peggy. Councilman Morris?
Did I hear that right, that we're, the cost, if I can, maybe for this first year is about 9,000 over budget?
That's what we estimate it could be. So we had budgeted $142 a ton for this next fiscal year, and this contract would start in August, and we came in at 14850. That is in comparison to a cost of about $190 a ton to actually just take this to the landfill, so that would be the alternative. So it is, it is less to go this route of removing it and preparing it for other uses.
Now, that's, that's pretty close, you know, for budgeting, I mean, budget is a kind of a guess in a lot of these things. This is for a three-year agreement?
We asked for, yes, we asked for options for up to three years.
So you'll have, so after the first year, we do have the option to not pick up subsequent years if we want to.
Right, that's correct.
Process, John, I know that, I don't know, ins and outs of all of that, and I know you're comfortable with the company, and it seems like they're doing little extra things here to kind of make things easier for you all and us. But we dictate the process, right? I mean, we've written a schedule of work. Resume that the things that the previous company's been doing that's been making things easier for us is included in that scope of work?
Well, I think in this bid, we, the town provides the sludge, the process of putting the sludge into the trailer, and then, you know, we're responsible for haul, you know, they're responsible for hauling it away, and then disposing it as they, you know, predict or dictate in the bid. But that part, after that part, you know, that's, it's on them to do the disposal and all of that. We just, we just supply. disposal and, and all of that. We just, we just supply the, the product. And, you know, we, in the future, there is things that, that we could probably do because right now, we're not, we're not even producing a Class B sludge. And we have to add, make some more adjustments to and add a couple of things to the process to get to a Class B, you know, sludge. But we did that process. We could probably get a cheaper rate because we're halfway through it. But that's, we got to weigh out if the money is worth it by putting into that to weigh in the price of disposing.
I did speak with him about that. He said it was about $75 a ton for Class B.
Right. So, we, we'd have to look at the numbers to see. It's, it's not too, it's just, and, you know, to buy some equipment, things like that to be added, but we'd have to weigh out the costs to see if it's worth the, the, you know, money that we save.
Some ins and outs to it, and I'm going to fall in line with your recommendation, whatever that ultimately is. Maybe it's just this one company. Which really brings me to really, my only other question really is, we've got one bidder for this big line item here. I know they're a tried and true entity. I get that they're scarce. If I'm in, and I know it seems that we do a lot of mandatory pre-bids, and there are certainly pluses and minuses to doing that, but making a mandatory, it's crystal clear what you're expecting. There's no ambiguity. You're here, you're meeting people, you know, and that's cool. Did we outreach to any other jurisdictions for contacts to try to, I mean, I, maybe, wait for some other folks, but you just couldn't get?
Yeah, we did. And John, you want to, the county has a particular hauler as well, but this, with enhanced nutrient, it is a little different than what the county uses. Is that correct, John?
Right. Calver County, I believe, is still using Schofield, or what is this last I saw they were using? Duffield, I mean, Schofield. But they're still using Duffield, who just takes it to a landfill over in Virginia. So, he's charging a little bit more, and that's their process. We used to use Duffield, and we weren't too happy with that process. It, they, you know, it was slow picking up the trailer. And we had, where they didn't come, and then when they came, they said that they couldn't remove the sludge because it sat too long. And it, it just didn't, wasn't very good.
And I, and I, I'm sorry. I was just saying, I think what's important is that the plant is processing the sludge differently. And so, this is being reused and applied. And so, that, that service is different from just the landfill service that the county's using.
But our process is cheaper than the county's process.
Right. Plus, we did look into piggybacking onto some other counties. But it seems that this company started out as O-line. And Senegro is another big operator who bought O-line. So, they still, the O-line is still in there somewhere on the negotiations, a different thing, because they have the plant, I think, what they do now. But the hauling is mostly through Senegro, who bought them out. So, they, they kind of, they're into everybody. They have Charles County, Anaronda County, Harper County, Montgomery County. So, Senegro is the main company in Maryland, just about. And it is what it is. But, and the other thing to point out is, we do 1,700 that we're giving out to bid on, 1,700. And if there was anybody bigger than Senegro, a lot of them would say, ah, that's a little too, too small to bid on it because we want the, you know, the 10,000 tons and stuff to make it worth those guys' whiles. It's a particular operation that's just a few, catamony hand that, that do this kind of work.
Understood. It's very specialized. And again, I'm going to take whatever you recommend ultimately. I just, you know, if I'm the only bidder at a mandatory pre-bid, nobody else there, my price is probably going up a little bit because I'm.
I did talk to him about that and asked him how it compared to his other rates for other jurisdictions, and it is comparable.
Yeah, the response, people doing what you're counting on them to do, it's not, you, that's worth more than saving a few nickels on stuff, you know. I'm an advocate, you know. People like to gravitate right to the low bids and these things. And there's a lot more to meet the eye to some of these things. You know, we want people that are going to be responsible and responsive, make our job, our jobs easier. So, anyway, that's all my only questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Larry?
Couple of background comments. One, from my professional career, I worked with Senegro on a number of projects. And just working on biosolids disposal was always one of the most challenging aspects of doing work at treatment plants because of the limited number of options one had for contractors like that. Senegro happened to be the biggest one in the area. So, I'm, I'm not terribly surprised we only got the one bidder. That doesn't shock me in this case. And the fact that it's them, I'm, I'm okay with that. Just a couple of other comments. I'm happy to see we have in the RFP documents about the utilization of the biosolids in accordance with applicable laws and regulations. And I also see in here that there's the required regular testing
Yes.
of the biosolids. And I'll just offer the comment that I'm, I'm pleased that we are going this route of, as opposed to the route that some other municipalities go where they just haul it to a landfill and bury it. At least we're trying to recycle what is a nutrient-rich material for fostering growth of, of other plants. And I read their options, biosolids options, that's the full range of options. So, hopefully, they're taking advantage of all those pelletization, composting, digestion, what have you. So, that's, that's good. And then the last thing, I noted that they will perform Class A treatment, final marketing and distribution of the end product, and utilization of Class A-treated biosolids in accordance with applicable laws and regulations. So, I'm sure they're going to be doing regular testing of that, too. Will they share those results back with us?
They will if I can request those, and they can, they can provide all that data to us.
I, I think it would be good for us to just keep tabs on that. We just need to make sure that they do that testing on our biosolids and not when they get it up to the main facility and mix it in with somebody else's. So, we just want to keep track that it is indeed our biosolid. So, I just want to commend everyone for doing the right thing in terms of one of the most challenging aspects of wastewater treatment, and that's what do you do with the stuff that you take out of there.
Well, you know also, Larry, that it is one of the prime operations of a plant because if you can't move it, then you got problems because that's what causes the spills because just like anything else, it backs up. So, this company is dependable, and, you know, that's what, you got to keep it moving.
And if you can't get that stuff out of there, it's, it's like your body being constipated.
Right.
You got to move that stuff out of there, or the plan is not going to work well. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Larry. Mr. Frank?
So, I have to say, you know, when I read this, most of it was Greek to me. I've learned more in this discussion. I understood the dollar figures, but that was probably the extent of it. Couple of things. I, one of the questions that I had after reading this was, is there some sort of requirement that the contractor does sort of environmentally proper, proper content? I think you've covered that, right? So, so I understand that better now. I also had concerns about the single bidder, but, you know, again, John, Larry, Jay, Holly, you guys are all satisfied. You know, what, who am I to, who am I to insert any other opinion on that? The last kind of bullet item I had noted is, is sort of future budgeting, which I'm sure my colleague Valerie will cover better than I will. But it does occur to me, something that just, as a result of this conversation, it, if this is something that needs to be done, what would happen if this one sole contractor went away? And that does, I might say it keeps me up at night, but it, it would keep you up at night if you weren't retiring. So, I just, I mean, I'm curious about that.
I can give you an example of what's happening at the time now is, take a look at Patapsco and Baltimore or Back River. That is one of the main things that they're having trouble with under spills, is they haven't been able to remove solids. In fact, they've tried to get Senegro to look at it, but they tried to put it through that process and the heat exchangers, and it started catching fire. So, their, their process out there from, they treat like, Patapsco treats 70 million gallons a day, Back River does 250. So, there's some kind of flammable stuff getting into it, and they really couldn't take it through the process. So, that's what happens, and it is a nightmare. But we're happy with what they're doing for us.
Well, I did, I've learned a lot, and I certainly support what, you know, this, as, as it moves forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Charlie.
Charlie raised a really good point. I hadn't thought about, we, we should, if anything happens to this company, have a, have some backup plans.
They do have a backup plan. I think they have lagoons. And then they also, in the worst scenario, they could take it, they have SSUs to take it to a landfill. But they do have lagoons, also storage facilities as a backup. And then they have another backup where they could take it to a landfill. But as long as they can keep the plant going, everything is fine.
Got it. And one thing that has not come up, this is a shared expense with our partners. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And I think the budgeting is fine if it goes over a little at the 148.5 per ton. Does this, I assume we've taken into consideration the increase from the Heritage and then from any of the septic tanks that probably will not go online this year. Have we?
Not this year. But I did ask the partners to give us an idea of when that was, or Heritage, no. But that's, that was what, 75 homes, I think, 80, 80 homes? We can handle that. But I thought you meant Highlands. I don't know why I had that in my head, but.
Because it's coming up.
Right. And that's a little bigger spread. But I think, you know, when it gets to that, we'll probably be in the options for the other years because I think that's not going to take place till 2025, I think.
That's correct.
So.
So, it's, we budgeted for 142. The new bid is 148.5. And if we took it to a landfill, it'd be 190. And so, what I especially like about this is what Larry pointed out, is that this is an environmentally friendly solution through the pelletization process. And so, I don't see how we could do better. But you did mention one thing that I'm most curious about. And you said that we could even do better than this if we were to get to a Class B sludge level, which would drop the cost with improvements. So, just my curiosity is what improvements would need to be done to do that? And I, I know we wouldn't do it if it wasn't cost efficient and in our best interest, but I'm curious what those improvements are.
Well, we would just have to add an additional smaller tank and probably put in a centrifuge or some type of de-watering mechanism that when we do our wasting on a daily basis that goes into these digesters, we would run it through the centrifuge first and de-water it and send the water back to the plant and then pump a completely de-watered sludge into the digesters where we, we would take that process out, and then we would give it a lot more time, detention time in the digesters. So, we would also save a lot of volume, and we could probably run the press a lot less. And, I mean, hopefully save a little bit of money doing that because it's a Class B sludge. And it, it takes probably around 20 days in digestions for the aerobic process to do that, to break it, break the, the, the microorganisms down enough to get to Class B. And then we, we run that through and save a little bit of money. It's not a difficult process to do. We would just have to look at the seasonal things when it's cold and things like that. Make sure nothing freezes on the stuff. But I, I think we could do it fairly cheap, but we'd have to run the numbers and then see what the cost of the hauling is and the process of the pressing and things like that. They do have a new process now for presses that you could add to it and get a Class A out of it. But I think that would be a little bit more money to do that. But that's a difference.
Just a comment on that. It, it's such a delicate balance of the money that we're spending at the plant to reduce the water content to the biosolids and make it a Class A as compared to what the cost is for this company to take it. It, it's a very delicate balance of where do you spend the money? So, I understand.
Right. We'd have to do, we'd have to look at everything before we, you know, would recommend anything like that. But it's, it's something to think about.
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting concept. And so, it's a shared expense. We're close to what our budget was, just slightly over. We're dealing with slightly more capacity because of the heritage, and who knows what else may come along. And you have good vibes from this company. I remember the conversation from three years ago or four years ago when we went through this. I remember the problems with the other provider that we had. So, I have no problems with supporting this contract whatsoever. I mean, and if we needed to do a budget adjustment, so be it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John. Yes, sure, Peggy?
I'm thinking one is the increase that we talked about for water and sewer to the people using it. Does this, is this covering it, or do we need to rethink that increase to be higher?
I think, I think we're fine with what we discussed with the increase already for the utility rates.
And another thing is, there's a lot of discussion around about it becoming more and more expensive for disposal of garbage and everything. So, it even may be more, as far as going to a Class B sludge or a Class A sludge, it may be even more thoughtful to think, to go through that in case, you know, we have these increases coming up, but they may exponentially go up as time goes on and there's a, becoming a more difficult time to dispose of waste. So, I think it might be another reason really to have a good look or tell your next person, have a really good look at, well, what's it going to cost? Not just because, well, maybe it'll even out, but because for the future, it might be a better step. Okay, that's it.
Thank you. And thank you, John. Next, we have HVAC improvements for the public works facility. I'll let Holly give an overview.
Thank you. So, the town council approved a budget that included HVAC upgrades for our public works facility. We actually are in the process of still gathering informal bidding proposals for those. Jay has, expects at least three total to come in, and we do expect to have that before town council in our upcoming town meeting. And we wanted to provide the scope of work to council to ask any questions about this project.
Very good. Starting with Valerie, do you have any questions?
Can you refresh my memory? What was the cost or what did we budget for this item? I don't see it on the report here.
So, the entire budget, which is going to include a, a new roof on the building, was 75,000 for this year. And I think we're going to come in under budget for everything.
So, it'd be the roof and the HVAC?
Correct.
Well, over the years, Jay, the public works building down there has been a little bit of everything from storage to just everything. Is this, these two repairs, is that enough, or do you actually need more things to make that place truly workable?
Well, I think it's a good step along the way. I actually considered looking at building an entire separate building for a while, looking at numbers and budget, but just due to learning more about this flood resiliency stuff, where we would put it in my footprint over there and the cost of everything right now. I mean, every single product that, just like in John's world, that I would do anything with is moved by diesel fuel across this country, whether by ship. Everything is so astronomical right now that I kind of scaled that down. And regardless, we needed to put a roof on the existing building. And when we say upgrades HVAC, there's never been AC at our shop. So, there's, there's an oil burning furnace. It's funny because I went into the thing today because I figured it'd come up. And it was put in an 89. It's, I kind of like it because it's very old school, and I can. It's, I kind of like it because it's very old school, and I can, it's a very simple unit. I can pretty much fix it and then call the guy and say, hey, come in here and fix it, right? But there's never been AC, so it's not just staff, it's our computers, everything has suffered. So this working public works garage, we're out there with our computers, so we're, and part of this project is, we're building a little bit more office space, and this is going to be a three-zoned, I think you have the print in front of you, so the existing office that you've met, one more additional office, 16 by 16, and kind of like a break room that we had, it's going to be a three-split system, very similar to what in, what went into the water park, a ductless system that's through the wall, pretty simple, not a whole lot of engineering, but I do want to build it for the worst conditions. I'd rather pay upfront for the right sear, like a minimum 18-sear unit, a few conditions that I want to have built in, obviously an elevated condenser outside in case we ever do get flooded. And I should have three bids before council in this month's meeting.
So this is more than a roof and HVAC, it's also redoing a little bit of the interior, which is long overdue?
Correct, correct. And so that interior is still within this budget, and we're actually building it ourselves. We've, we've got the material, and we're going to do internet and different things, electric. So it's, that part of it's okay, this, what we're going to approve hopefully in this meeting is just the AC contract.
Understood. And you mentioned something when you first started talking that I hadn't thought about tonight, and that is, has there ever been flooding in this building? Any water from any of the storms that we had either last October or Isabel are the two largest?
That I'm aware of, no. It's never flooded. I was, I started just after Isabel, but I heard Isabel came within a foot of the floor grade of that building.
Okay. Is that a concern with your design for your HVAC?
No, I'm going to elevate, I'm going to elevate everything. Anything I build now will be elevated, the, obviously the building, we can't move, but anything moving forward, we're going to build, the electric panel we put in is going to be six foot instead of three foot and different things. So we're building, preparing for a flood, but the building is going to stay at the existing elevation.
I have four words, it is about time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just actually wanted to know exactly where this building was. It's out by the water tower in Richfield Station. Is that right?
Actually, it's behind the wastewater treatment plant. I always mess with John, I said, you think you got it bad, I'm behind you.
That explains a lot, then. That explains why you're worried about flooding. And yeah, that didn't make any sense to me. So, okay. Thanks, Larry. Stick to water. I have no free.
It's just free from your house, Charlie.
Thank you.
It is, it is, it's across the street from the house.
Thank you, Charlie. You okay, Charlie?
No, I'm good.
Yes.
No real questions, I did just want to, for the record, point out that I think we're doing a very good job looking to achieve a minimum sear of 21. Just for everyone's purposes, that's the seasonal energy efficiency ratio, and a minimum is like 13, and I think most modern equipment now is in the range of, what, 13 to 21? So this is at the upper range of, so it's, what we're looking for is a very efficient unit. So good job. Or answer my question on the budget. Thank you. So I have.
Thank you, Larry. Mr. Mars?
Yes, sir, thank you. Follow along behind Larry's comments there, Jay, the 21-sear certainly jumped out to me. I know that that's quite efficient. The differences between 21-sear going down to 18-sear, though, that could be a significant price drop. And I suppose you're going to recommend that going with the, the higher sears is better for your purposes.
So part of the RFP is actually going to be listing out the cost of all material versus labor, so we can compare, because there, you can go with a lower sear than a higher efficiency indoor unit. I want to look at all variables. So every bidder that's, we're going to have a mandatory prebid, is going to have a breakdown of cost versus labor, so we can compare it and come to the council and mayor with a recommendation that we think is best moving forward. If you go with the lower sear, you're going to be paying higher. Correct. And then, then also, it's a more extreme on the compressor, there's different things that weigh out. So I'm looking for a 21-sear, but if someone can justify it or look at a different cost and show me something, I'll at least look at it.
I understand you're considering that stuff. That's all we can expect, I think.
And, and I'll be honest, in talking to the two latest one that did the water park and other things, there is a demand for this equipment, that, that this equipment could be up to a year out, which I find incredible, but that might be the nature of it.
That's true. That drives up costs, too. We're in some environments on my job that it's nuts, like you hit, we want a specific boiler, it could take you nine, 10 months to get it.
Right.
Those are the things we're not accustomed to. So anyway. The uses of the spaces, I mean, I'm sure it's evolved over the years, you're, you commented on a little bit, you're kind of working in all these spaces with computers off and on.
So we have, we have our, my original office, which has a computer in there, and there's also a computer that's in the shop, which is Donald Richardson's office, which, but I mean, it's just, it's not a good environment. So we're going to move his office into this other one. We also really have no place to roll out plans. I normally come here if I meet with any entity, so I'd like to have some space in there to roll out a set of plans, meet with different builders and different things of the such. For example, today, we met with, you know, the core and looking at different things, and we held it at different places, because just nowhere to facilitate any kind of meeting over there now.
Give you some flexibility there.
Sure.
Understood.
All right, I don't think I have. I did notice, I guess the bidders are going to include all electrical power costs associated with this whole system, except the primary power going to the exterior.
Correct. So in other words, when they run to this split system, I want them to know that they're responsible for everything going to each A, B, and C of the split system, and we'll provide the power to the unit, which we can do in-house, because they would just sub it out anyway. So we have our own electrician that can provide the power. I was looking at that today, how we're going to get it there, to the 50-amp disconnect outside, and the contractor is going to be responsible from there, everything, and even the low voltage.
The power that's there now and the panel can handle what you're proposing?
Yeah. It's on the other end of the building, we're going to have the conduit over there, but we are. And obviously, the work's going to be permitted and checked and everything else.
Good job, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, have you considered converting your oil-burning thing to burn sludge from Baltimore?
I'll tell you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just to, do you think that your bids will be able to give you an idea of when they really will be able to get the equipment?
So I've asked them to hold their prices for 30 days, and I'll be honest, right now, everyone's holding their prices for 15 days. When it comes to the roof, they're talking, holding their prices for 10 days, because everything's so fluid right now and changing. But I've asked the two that I spoke to, and we're going to meet another one next week, to make sure that they can get these products with a certain guarantee and different things. And then if it's beyond a certain date, we're going to have to talk with that, we'll give them, I'm going to say realistically 90 days, and then if they're not able to do it within 90 days, we're going to have to put a clause in there that, however we figure that out, Holly, that either we renegotiate or we do something else. But I'm asking them, once they are approved in a meeting, that they have 90 days to get this equipment and install it.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I mean, that, that was my thought when you were talking about how long out it could be, is that they could easily say, oh, yeah, we'll have it in 20 days. And then a year later.
Right.
That'll be Todd's job, right in that clause.
Make you a note now.
Yeah. Thank you very much. No other questions?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Council lightning round, we'll stay with you.
Well, first of all, I just want to say it's glad, I'm really glad to be back in the room. It was okay to do this remotely, that last meeting that I did, but it's much better to be here in person. And I look forward to the health fair on Saturday, and I hope that we don't have much humidity in the air in the downward form, and it goes out nice and sunny and lovely for everyone. And I just want to mention, if you find that you only have 15 days to respond to a bid, then would we just do a special session if we have to vote on it?
Depends on what.
Or is it not something we have to vote on?
So the plan is to put this before council at the next week's town meeting? So I think we'll be well within the 15 days.
Okay. Thank you.
Greg, if you don't mind, I'm going to speak for Keith's empty seat there. He, he asked me to speak for him during the lightning round. He just wanted to remind everybody that the health fair is on Saturday from 10 to 2, and he hopes to see everybody there healthy. I added the last word.
Yeah, sad that I'll miss the health fair. My mother-in-law's 80th birthday party got rescheduled for that day, and I'm a key component to making that happen down the Calvert-Cleves water park. But I did want to, I'm encouraged to be attending the Stars and Stripes, we haven't had that for a while, and then that's a couple of weeks down the road. Anybody listening, I'm sure that's going to be a grand event. So I hope to see everybody there, and I'll have my fingers crossed for all of us here for the weather this Saturday.
Friday night in North Beach, too.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Again, I'll just echo everyone's comments, hope to see everyone at the health fair on Saturday, and hope the weather holds. And then I just wanted to offer congratulations to Randy Wilkerson, operator trainee at the Water Reclamation Treatment Plant, for being awarded a scholarship to assist and is trained to obtain his MDA Operator Class 5A certification. So good job. Just wanted to comment that that's sponsored by several professional organizations, including one of which I was its president a very, very long time ago.
Do you have presidents, then?
No, I think I was emperor.
Very good comeback.
Shocks me not at all. Just, I just want to make a brief comment here, and I won't be long-winded. You know, we're fortunate, and I've talked to my colleagues about this, and I've talked to people in other municipalities about this, so we're really fortunate to have the people that we do working, working for this town, both the elected officials and the staff. And, you know, right now, we're seeing some turnover. I don't think that's bad. We're thrilled to have Brittany on board, and, you know, I know we'll, we'll end up finding someone to, to try to fill John's shoes and.
He's already here.
Oh.
We found him.
Congratulations and welcome. But, you know, what we don't want to have is, a couple of months ago, I made a comment about civility, and I just want to emphasize that again. You know, we all have to work together, and I, I say this to, to our staff and our, and my peers, but also to anyone who's tuning in, and I'll probably repeat this at the, at the council meeting, there's just no reason for a town this size to have vitriolic dialogue and, and people being threatened and, and, you know, there, there's always two sides to a story, take some time, listen, talk, and I think we'll all be better for it. So I just offer those words. Looking forward to the health fair, physical and mental health. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Lastly, Valerie?
Oh, yeah, very quickly. So the green team held their spring cleanup, and it worked out very well. Had folks down in the marsh, actually, on the railway trail along Kellum's Field, down near the fire hall. So that's good. Picked up a lot of litter, unfortunately, but, you know, it is what it is. And we're excited to be helping the town by suggesting plantings and placement of plantings and trees at the Bayfront Park entrance on both sides. So that's been a fun little activity that's going on currently. And we also look forward to participating in the Health and Wellness Fair.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it again.